Good evening and welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, March 25th, 2024. Time is six o'clock. We're here at the Select Board Conference Room at Town Hall. This meeting is being held in hybrid fashion, both in person and on Zoom. And all meetings of the Select Board are recorded except for our executive sessions. If anything should happen to the Zoom, we will continue in person. If anyone is recording the meeting, which we are, but if anyone else is recording the meeting, please make it known to the chair at this time. Okay. Sergeant Griffin didn't make it back. Hey Carl.
Yes, sir.
Why don't you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight?
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the republic, the British stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, six o'clock. We're gonna have public comments. I don't remember where I am in my normal rotation, so we'll start within the room first, and then we'll go to folks on Zoom. For folks on Zoom, if you have a public comment, if you could use the hand raise function, we'll come to you as soon as we've covered the room. So is there anyone with any public comments this evening in the room? Who got their hand up first? Mr. Peterson. Stevenson, if you could state your name and address, because I got it wrong already. And then the floor is yours.
Robert Stevenson, 10 South Long Yard Road. Good evening. I'm the chairman of the Southwick Collin Grandville School Committee. I would like to address some disappointing comments and interactions that I've had with Select Board Member Perron over the last couple of weeks. At your last meeting on Monday, March the 11th, Mr. Perron stated during the meeting that the school has stuck their head in the sand for too long when commenting on the latest situation at
Yeah, I lost my audio.
Same here, Carl.
All right, Randy, I did send Lisa communication to notify her of that.
Thank you.
So, and I'm sure that would also apply to all the other members of us all sitting on our remote Zoom icons. I can see all the names.
I can hear you pretty well.
There you go. Can you, so none of us can hear the meeting, right, Jason?
No, I can't hear anything.
I can't hear anything.
Jason, you don't sound any better than I do.
No, I, I came home from Vegas all excited, thinking I didn't get sick this time. And either I did on the plane or I didn't. And or I got sick, you know, I came across something, a few days I've been home.
Yeah, well, hopefully Lisa's pointed out, it looks like Doug left the table. Maybe he's going to try to resolve the issue, but. So you came home and what you did get was sick and what you didn't do was win any big money.
No, we did see some nice, brand new townhomes, though.
Okay, any good shows?
We went to a show, we went to the Golden Knights game. I went and drove the stadium truck again, had a blast. I got that on video, so I did the all-in-car video, so.
Can you guys hear me?
I can hear you, Lisa.
Okay, so I went in there and told them that we couldn't hear them, so he stopped talking and Doug is rebooting it.
Okay, thank you, Lisa.
Thanks, Lisa.
Oh, I can see the fearless chairperson, his face is back in front of the computer.
I can see everyone, but I don't hear a thing.
Okay, apologies for the technical difficulties there. We're gonna start at the top because we're not quite sure where the Zoom connection to the Town Hall Conference Room was lost, so we'll start with public comments. And Carl, you can hear us okay now?
Yes, I can, sir. The rest of us on Zoom were entertaining ourselves while you were remedying the matter.
Which will be duly recorded and played back forever on YouTube.
That's fine, not an issue.
Okay, so where, I don't know where you, where we lost you, so where did we lose you, Mr. Steinhardt?
I think it was about three words into what Mr. Stevenson was speaking about. So he was coming in to talk about something, some interaction he had, I believe, with one of our board members.
Okay, so for those in the room, that was a dress rehearsal. For those on Zoom get to hear it for the very first time, Mr. Stevenson, if you could state your name and address for the record and call it a do-over.
Robert Stevenson, 10 South Long Yard Road. I'm the chairman of the Southwick Collin Grandville School Committee. I would like to address some disappointing comments and interactions that I've had with Select Board Member Perron over the last couple of weeks. At your last meeting on Monday, March the 11th, Mr. Perron stated during the meeting that the school had stuck their head in the sand for too long when commenting on the latest situation at the district. He indicated that he was at our meeting the previous week on March the 5th, but then couldn't seem to remember anything specific that the superintendent stated as to what steps we had taken and what we were planning to do. Diane Gale needed to remind him of the objectives that she had outlined. He then sent an email out on Friday, the 15th, to the superintendent and I, outlining three conversations that he had had with families that from his perspective justified why he spoke out at Monday's meeting. One conversation happened a year ago, and the other two, I really can't understand when they happened. According to the email, he stated they happened two days prior, but that would have been Wednesday, which would have been two days after the Select Board meeting. He then requested that if the rumors were true, that a committee member's child was involved, that the member needed to step down, and if they would not step down on their own, and I quote, "I asked the school committee to take whatever necessary action is required to remove that member," end quote. Just to clarify for Mr. Perron, the school committee's positions for the town of Southwick are elected positions, and we do not have the ability to remove a member. Later that same evening, an article came out in the Westfield News, quoting from the same email that was sent to me that morning. So within four days' time, I hit Mr. Perron publicly insulting the school district and then requesting one of our committee members to resign without any facts at all. In that same article, it stated that Mr. Perron indicated that he had sent the email out as a citizen of Southwick and not a member of the Select Board. The only problem with that statement is that it's not correct. The email was sent to me at 4:58 in the morning, came from Mr. Perron's Select Board email address, and was signed, "Jason M. Perron, Southwick Select Board Vice Chairman." I then saw that Mr. Perron's wife placed a post on Facebook that same evening before the article came out, indicating that she has now obtained enough signatures and will be a candidate for school committee in the upcoming town elections. Now the situation makes complete sense. I responded to Mr. Perron's email last Sunday morning. I asked if he could give me the names of the children that are having issues so I could check to see if they were being addressed correctly, and then asked why he did not allow me an opportunity to respond to him before going to the press. I finally received a response from Mr. Perron yesterday morning. He stated he couldn't wait for me to respond to his email and needed to go to the press immediately because after, and I quote, "After attending the meeting and seeing that residents of this town are clearly ignorant to this subject, it needed to be addressed," end quote. So according to Mr. Perron, because the residents of this town are ignorant, he needed to immediately go to the press and request the resignation of a school committee member without having any of the facts. That makes perfect sense to me. Mr. Perron, using your political position to try and influence public opinion and disparage another committee that represents this town and demand resignation from the same committee that your spouse is now running for, is about a clearer definition of a conflict of interest as you can get and certainly raises some interesting ethical questions that should be explored by this committee. This kind of behavior is beneath that of a sitting Select Board member of this town. All this now appears to be is a shameful political stunt orchestrated by the Perron family. The citizens of Southwick deserve better from their elected Select Board members and anyone running for office. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room? Yes.
Hi, my name is Erica Emmelin, and I live at 81 Wartz Binding Road. I just wanted to talk about Southwick as my village. I had a horrible tragedy happen to me about nine years ago, and my husband was killed in front of me. And I was left with two very young daughters. One was in second grade and one was in kindergarten. And Southwick, at that point in time, in 2015, rallied behind me. We were, this town came together like a community I had never seen before. I had strangers dropping off meals at my house. I had neighbors coming over to mow my lawn. It was a wonderful time for such an awful tragedy to have happened to me. I don't think that anyone going through a tragedy right now to that magnitude would have the same response from this town. We are clearly a town divided amongst itself. And I too would like to make a comment that I will read to make sure that I get the quotes correct. Selectman Perron used his political position to divide our community and promote his wife's political campaign for school committee. In an article published on Mass Live entitled, "Racist Graffiti: Call for Resignation Add to Turmoil in Southwick Schools", Selectman Perron, in his capacity as an elected town official, demanded the resignation of a currently seated school board member to promote his wife's campaign for school committee. This action is appalling, a complete conflict of interest, and a clear violation of ethics. Selectman Perron could and should have used his political position to bring our community together, especially during a time, a critically sensitive time, which involves our children here in Southwick. Instead, Mr. Perron, without any fact checks, sent an email to the press stating, and I quote, "It is necessary to address the allegations that Maloney's child was involved. I am requesting the school committee advise that person that, as a citizen of Southwick as well as a member of the Select Board, please resign forthwith. This is the best thing they can do for the town, district, their child, and themselves. This is the right thing to do," end quote. Selectman Perron is not an elected spokesperson for this incident, and he clearly does not know the facts of the situation. It is evident that Mr. Perron used his political position to divide our community and promote his wife's political campaign for school board.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room this evening that would like to speak under public comments? Thank you. Is there anyone on Zoom? I see no hands at this time. Okay. We will go into our regular rest of our business here. 6:05 PM, poll hearing for Verizon New England and N-Star Electric Company doing business as EverSource Energy for relocation of one pole, wires, cables, and fixtures on job number 1A6PG1G, South Loomis and Klein Road. I'm assuming this gentleman has something to do with that hearing. How are you?
Good, how are you doing?
Great. Your name, sir?
Don Vaughner with Verizon.
Very well.
So I'm assuming that you folks have the map as well. Yeah, okay. The, I just went up to the site, took measurements, they're pretty accurate to what you see there. The one pole, number 20, is moving 10 feet to the right, and there's a new pole going in in between existing 21 and the new pole 20. The purpose of these poles, the relocation of one and the new one, is to be put on either side of an intended culvert project, which I assume was initiated by the highway department. And they're moving one pole further away from the culvert and then one on the other side to support the wiring going across what's there now.
Okay, and is the one, that existing one going to be removed?
It will, yes.
Great. Yeah, that's a good move for that pole to be gone. Anybody else want to see a copy of the plan? Not all at once. Okay. Questions?
Other than, this is the one that's talking about pole 20.
Yeah.
Not the, not the first, the pole that we have. If that makes a difference to you.
Yeah, to make sure we're not.
You got two of them tonight, correct? You only have one.
Is there another one on the line?
Yes.
Yep. For a new pole. I can probably speak to that one as well.
We have Mr. Ferraro on.
Mr. Ferraro's here for that one, so let's just make sure we got the right ones.
So we're on.
So we're on this one, right?
We're, we're on this, we're on the 620 appointment.
Check. We went out of work.
Oh, okay.
So we're gonna.
We couldn't get the pledge right this morning.
That's all right. So let's back up. So is anyone here for the ones at the job, A6PG1G?
I'm here for both the jobs as well.
Okay, good. Did, did you want to speak to any of this, what we just covered about the, he mentioned, we have two hearings tonight, folks. We have one at 6:05, then we have a 610 liquor license, and then a 620 pole hearing. That's just how they worked out because of scheduling of time, we have to advertise these ahead of time. So this is the 6:05 one for A6PG1G, and this is South Loomis and Klein. And this is the one that's a little further up Klein, based on what?
That's.
Nope. No, this is the one at the intersection.
The intersection.
So we were talking about removing that pole at the, at the intersection of Klein and South Loomis.
I, I was speaking to the other one.
Yep, I got it. So that's that one, and you and Mr. Ferraro can work it out as to who wants to speak on that.
Well, I already jumped out of turmoil, we have Mr. Ferraro speak.
Okay, why don't you get this one?
Well, I don't have the paperwork in front of me, but I know we're moving one pole.
Yeah.
And the other one was to relocate two poles for a job. So I believe we're gonna relocate this pole from the intersection out of the intersection, if I understand.
That is correct, that, that's on an island. The intersection has an island that the pole is on, and Mr. Brown's efforts to do the infrastructure down there necessitate its relocation. And Randy is on, Randy's online with us if there's any questions about that. Pretty straightforward, and it's a safety, it's also for safety purposes.
Yeah, right.
That sound about right, Director Brown?
Yeah, that's correct. We've been working with Verizon about these.
I'm sorry, you're behind there. We'll come right to you in one second. Okay, now.
My name is Amber Reed Gold, and I'm a resident of Klein, South Loomis. I'm on the corner of Klein, South Loomis, so this will affect me.
Yeah.
I was told when I called Mr. Vassett, which, from Verizon.
Yeah.
And asked for some information, he suggested that I come to the meeting. But I'm, I'm just, I just want to know how many other poles will, are involved in addition to the one on the intersection.
I don't know which maps you have, but I, what number are you?
I'm 178.
So you're the one here.
Only, okay.
So the one at the intersection will be moving out and slightly up Klein Road. And then with one further down the street.
Do you want to show her this one?
That will be moving across. This is opposite side from you, so.
He doesn't have that much to do.
I'm glad we got you knowing which one.
Which one?
The second one.
The second one?
Yes.
It's gonna be moving right on the border of these two properties, 179, 175.
So this is you right here, right?
Right.
Okay, so this pole is existing.
Right, that's the other one.
Yeah.
The other one on the other side, the existing property is on the other side of the property. These two poles are going further up Klein from you.
That's 71, and these are staying, correct?
That one is staying, yes.
That one's gonna stay, that looks like it's just off your property line here.
On Klein.
Yeah, and then the one in the intersection is going away, in the middle of that island.
And where will, where will it be?
It's gonna be moved, yeah, right.
It's gonna come towards your property at the corner. It's gonna be right in the middle, right here. And here, this is the intersection one that's going away. There'll be a new pole set here and one set right here. If you'd like a copy of these, we can get those for you. Do you have any objection if I gave her these two, here you go. Make sure nothing. So this is the one to remove the pole at the island, setting one pole along, at 178 South Loomis. Any other comments from the public or on Zoom for this, this topic? Randy, any feedback on these?
No, I think we, you covered it. The, the pole at the intersection is being relocated so we can eliminate that, that Y-island to make it a more traditional T-shaped intersection.
Excellent. Okay. And Carl, do we have to take a motion to close the hearing and then vote?
You, you have this hearing before you, so you want to dispose of this matter by closing this one and then making a disposition, and then you'll hold the other one at the appointed time in your ad.
Correct, so we didn't really have a motion to open the hearing, so we'll have a motion to close the hearing, though. Anyone like to make a motion to close the hearing?
Close this first hearing.
Seconded.
Okay, roll call vote. Doug Mogul, aye?
Dan Gale, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay, entertain a motion to approve this petition for joint or in identical pole locations for job 1A6PG1G.
I'll make that motion.
Seconded.
Doug Mogul, aye?
Dan Gale, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay, that one's done.
I'm gonna take my seat.
You can hold on. We'll come back to you, good thing, because I gave away one of mine. All right, we'll come back. So now, 6:10 PM, this one I got the process for. Liquor license transfer hearing for Ken's Lakeside Plaza to DVJFLLC, doing business as Fusion Bar and Grill at 141 Congamon Road, Southwick, Mass. Okay, so I need a motion to open the hearing.
And make a motion to open this hearing?
Seconded.
Okay, Doug Mogul, aye?
Dan Gale, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay. Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of the General Laws as amended that an application has been made by DVJFLLC for the transfer of the all-alcoholic on-premise liquor license currently held by Ken's Lakeside Plaza LLC, license number 122208. Premises to be licensed is at 141 Congamon Road, Southwick, Mass. The establishment is a 11,714 square foot building consisting of the following for the purpose of this license. First floor, five rooms, cellar is one room with bar, the dining room area including three decks and one terrace. Upon this application, the Southwick Select Board will hold a public hearing in the Select Board Meeting Room of the Southwick Municipal Building located at 454 College Highway, Southwick, Mass. on March 25th, 2024 at 6:10 PM. Okay, read any paperwork to be entered into the record. I see none other than the application and the application statement, which I'm not going to read in its entirety. Would anybody like to speak to the application itself? Okay, seeing none, seeing none on Zoom. Would anybody like to speak in favor of the transfer of liquor license? Please just state your name and address, and we'll take your commentary. Young man in the back.
Kurt Saunders. There's a numerous addresses, but we own most of the property on that end of the street with the exception of two houses on Congamon Road. We just took the time to come up here and speak in favor of this transfer. I do not know the applicant, he's sitting in the room, I couldn't pick him out, but I can promise you that the Egglestons have done their due diligence to select a good candidate for this project. And I just came to speak in favor of it.
Thank you very much.
And also, we're two houses away from where there's a family from New York that couldn't make it, but also started to throw their two cents in there to give her all side. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak in favor of this application or the transfer of the liquor license? Is there anyone that would like to speak against the transfer of the liquor license? Is the applicant in the room? How are you? Would you like to introduce yourself and tell us what's going on over there?
My name is Damian, and this is my friend Joe. I live here in town on Southern Rising Corner Road. Well, this place became available. We asked Karen if we can be part of this community and start the Fusion Bar and Grill, and we think we're gonna be able to do that. Half past two and a half minutes.
Have you operated an establishment prior to this? Where?
Oh, my boy, there, there's a town called, I'm just gonna look for anyone's town. I'm sure it's angry.
I'm sorry?
I was able to tell, or, I'm trying to find someone else.
And at some point, you're gonna have to come in with a change of manager, or here is the change of manager. So Jose F. Fernandez, that's you. Okay, are you serve safe certified and all that? And you, you know how serious we take the laws and the Commonwealth, especially regarding serving underage and all of that? Really serious? Very well. Ms. Gale?
I have no questions. I just have to concur with Mr. Saunders that Mr. Eggleston has done a ton of work to pull this together, and I'm happy to see that he's got some partners coming in and bringing that place to life again. Definitely needed, thank you.
Mr. Perron?
Nothing to add. I'm glad to see that it's finally moving forward.
Any further discussion? I'd entertain a motion, I think we gotta close the hearing, a motion to close the hearing.
Make a motion to close this hearing?
Seconded.
Okay, that's a roll call vote to close. Doug Mogul, aye?
Dan Gale, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
More general discussion regarding transfer of the liquor license. Any?
No further.
Jason?
None.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to grant the transfer of the license as set forth on the application.
I'll make a motion to grant the transfer of the license.
Seconded motion.
Fusion Bar and Grill.
Okay, roll call vote. Doug Mogul, aye?
Dan Gale, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Excellent. Congratulations, Ken. Sir, welcome to town. Much success.
When will you be opening?
You know, open pretty early.
Yeah, great. Perfect.
We still need the state's pool.
Correct, thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Okay, 6:20. Pole hearing for Verizon New England for relocation of one pole, wires, cables, and fixtures on job number 1A6DM8L on Klein Road. And we kinda, you got the preview of that five minutes ago. So this is, this.
Correct. So just to reiterate, the pole number 20 is moving 10 feet to the right. There's a new pole, 20 and a half, being placed between that new pole and existing 21 to cover a planned culvert replacement work, job by the highway department, I presume.
Questions from the board?
Yes, sir.
None.
Ma'am, do you have any questions on this one?
Yeah, I just have one question regarding.
I just have one question regarding the length of time this this um, that went to.
Typically, poles go in in just a few hours, half a day for probably each one. If this whole project, all four poles I see here, probably something like.
Okay, will there be any disruption to services?
There should not be. If there is, it would be minimal, like 15 minutes, usually when they switch up the wires, but it's very minimal.
And then I was also told by Mr. who said that there was going to be a total reconfiguration of the of the present intersection. The island was gonna come out and that's what it would be configured in.
Yeah, I can't, that would be random. That, I would. It sounded like there's a T section going in or there's a Y now, so I'm not really sure.
I can, not really part of the hearing, but since we're kinda doing this, Mr. Brown?
Yeah, that's correct. There's a couple of things going on Klein Road this year. We have a culvert that's being replaced, so during that time, the road's gonna be closed for a period of time. And when that is done, we hope to have this work done to change that intersection from a Y shape to a traditional T shaped intersection.
Where on Klein is the culvert, Mr. Brown?
It's about 500 feet from South Loomis Street.
Yeah. A couple hundred feet past your house. Okay. Okay, any other questions, comments on this pole hearing? Okay, motion to close the pole hearing for A6, sorry, 1A6DM8L.
I'll make that motion to close the hearing.
Seconded.
Doug Mogul, aye?
Dan Gale, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
And a chain of motion to approve the relocation of one pole wires and cables and fixtures on job 1A6DM8L.
I'll make that motion.
Seconded.
Doug Mogul, aye?
Dan Gale, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
Great. Done. Thank you very much.
Thank you for listening.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Good to see you. Thank you for coming out. Hope we answered all of your questions best we could. Acknowledge payables warrant number 2422B dated March 18th in the amount of $5,336,330.94. Acknowledge and approve open session meeting minutes from March the 11th.
I'll make a motion to accept those. I'm sorry, I reviewed those.
That's fine.
I'll make a motion to accept those.
And I'll second.
Doug Mogul, aye?
Dan Gale, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
Okay. Next order of business, we have a request from the Southwick Cultural Council for a one day liquor license for the 2024 art show, which is going to be held on April 26th here at Town Hall. It's kind of an annual annual event. It's usually very well attended and very well put on by the cultural council. So I believe they usually request a waiving of the officer. And it'll be in the Town Hall lobby. Is where the liquor license will will be, one day liquor license will be subject to. Is there anyone here from the cultural council that'd like to speak to this? Sergeant, have you had a chance to review this yet for the cultural council?
Okay. I do have a question because neither of these are checked off.
It's a nonprofit.
So that will be beer and wine only then?
Yes.
I assume that must be the case if it's.
I'm assuming. It says all alcohol or beer and wine. I've never seen anything stiffer than a beer served there.
Okay.
So I'd entertain a motion to approve this subject to review by Sergeant Cropper, subject to review by the police department, but I don't, this is I entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion to approve that subject to review.
Seconded.
Doug Mogul, aye?
Dan Gale, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
Okay, next, we have the warrant for, and the Article One ballots, so it's the first part of our town meeting warrant, if you look at it. And it is a draft warrant for precincts one, two and three. On Tuesday, the 14th of May, will be election day. Leap year's got everything running late this year. From 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM for the following, the candidates for the following offices, Select Board, District School Committee, Board of Assessors, Board of Health, Cemetery Commission, Community Preservation Committee, Dickinson School Trustees, two library, sorry, three library trustees, two park and recreation commissioners, Planning Board, Southwick Housing Authority and the Water Commission.
And as you see, Mr. Chairman, one of those library trustees is for that remaining term. You just had a person resign recently, and there wasn't any sense to go through a short term appointment of somebody when you could just add them to the election ballot for the remaining term.
Correct.
So just, just as prepared.
Until the election. Correct.
So more importantly is the Article One warrant article, as you begin to see, that is the beginning of the annual warrant. And even though the issue is dealt with on the 14th of May and all the other warrant articles happen on the 21st.
Yep.
So.
So this is just a review. We're not approving this, right? This is just a.
Nope, it's to let you, it's to let you know what's coming in. Other warrant articles will be coming in at the end of the week. I think I already put all the CPC ones on your, in your mail folder already.
Correct.
So this is just to make sure you see what's coming in.
Okay. So from the CPC, they have their budget. And these are mostly projects that have gone through already or are going to be in front of the CPC or they've already approved, so.
Right. They're all voted and approved. They're just, this is for you to see what's going on the warrant.
So the CPC voted and approved these, some of these projects. I've won it. First is their budget, so that's covers their allocation of the CPC funds plus their reserve that they take for.
Admin.
Admin. And then this next article will be the debt service on the alum treatment, which I find it interesting that we have to revote to pay for debt that we already voted on to take on, but such as government. So from the 2020 alum treatment, we have to revote every year to, for the fifth payment on that $600,000 bond. And then the next two are projects that were recently approved by the CPC and being sent as warrant articles to town meeting. Because even though CPC votes to approve a project, it's really up to the voters of the town of Southwick to approve actually spending the money. So the first one is the Southwick Library Yard revitalization at 95 Feeding Hills Road. And the second is South Cove Middle Pond dredging. So this is any unanticipated cost in relation to the dredging of South Cove and Middle Pond. And this is for the design sampling permitting initiation of dredging or the duration of dredging of South Cove. And those will be on your warrant. Okay, I need a motion to approve the COLA adjustments for fiscal year 24 for non-union staff.
And those would generally be consistent with what you did for all the union MOAs that you just voted on in the last several weeks.
Correct.
Well, question? Would we hold off on the COA until we imminently fill that before we decide on that one and the park and rec?
You certainly can as part of your motion. Since they're vacant, there's not much to go up and you, either both of those will be subject to an MOA anyway. So it's kind of a moot point, but I see what you're saying.
Both of the park and rec would also. Right now, it's the same person acting.
Correct. Well, they would, yeah, but they're imminent to have a discussion around the director and then that would set that. Once that's done, that would set that and would probably, yeah.
Supersede this anyway.
Correct.
Yeah. The other thing you're doing, Diane, is you're also realize, this goes back to last July 1st. Some of the issues. Exactly. So some of the issues we're dealing with are, you know, might be affected by the last few months, but we still have to make good going back to last July 1st.
Yep, perfect. Okay. Make a motion to accept those COLA adjustments.
Seconded.
And and that's consistent with the union 3%, right?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Doug Mogul, aye?
Dan Gale, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna skip the next item because we are gonna go into executive session and kind of, I'm gonna try to see if we can't get through our agenda and then go into executive session so we do not have to reconvene in open session, if that's okay, Carl? Or would you rather us take that at this juncture?
No, 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 we can, we can hold off on it for now, but I think that would be something that we would wait till Labor Council came on to clarify that, so. She'll, she'll be here before we roll call in, so just put this on hold for now. We can clarify with her on whether or not you want to do it in a different manner, but you certainly posted on executive session.
Oh, yeah, we're posted. I just, I don't, we don't normally interrupt the Select Board meeting to go into executive session and then reconvene.
So she will, she will determine, she will.
We can always do that at the end and still reconvene if we need to take a vote. Okay. So we have donations to the animal control shelter from a E Falsetti, Westfield, Mass., $75. J. Fritch, Newington, Connecticut, $50. D. La Breck, Granby, Mass., $25. E. La Breck, Southwick, Mass., $50. C. Leckie, Southwick, $50. D. Mitchell, Weathersfield, Connecticut, $150. E. Payne, Colchester, Connecticut, $50. Security Fence of Southwick, $50. J. Skerritt, East Heartland, $100. And C, I was doing so good, Zeratchik, Westfield, Mass., $25. They need a motion to accept.
Make a motion to accept these donations as listed.
Seconded.
Doug Mogul, aye?
Dan Gale, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
Great. Thank you. And we have a request here from the Planning Board. Based on, I believe this is AG, the Attorney General's review of Chapter 185, Section 38, Short Term Rentals, bylaw that was approved at the last annual town meeting. The Attorney General had a couple of specific comments that they would like addressed. So the Planning Board is requesting that we have, that they open a public hearing for the purpose of setting forth a warrant article to make those amendments at the upcoming town meeting. So I need a motion to send this back to the Planning Board for them to hold a hearing on a proposed warrant article for Chapter 185, Section 38.
Motion to send that back to the Planning Board for a hearing. Public hearing.
Doug Mogul, aye?
Dan Gale, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
Next is a motion, approve or a DPW request for seasonal help position posting for DPW. Randy, still here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There he is.
Yes.
Do you want to talk to this?
Yeah, just trying to get a jumpstart on looking for summer help, working with public works over the summer months. We usually hire one or two, usually in the past years that they've been high school students. So we're just looking for approval from the board to go out and advertise and try to solicit that that help.
Need a motion to approve that posting at a rate of $16.50 an hour.
Make that motion?
Seconded.
Doug Mogul, aye?
Dan Gale, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the deposit of $17.60 into the library gift account and a $250 donation from Depot Square condo association, please.
Motion to accept those donations?
Seconded.
Doug Mogul, aye?
Dan Gale, aye.
Jason Peron, aye?
Yeah. Okay, so we're under new business. Why don't we go around the room first and then cover the ticket list here? And first of all, I'd like to take a moment while, there he is. Kind of observe the date, folks. This is Carl's last official meeting as the CAO. And unfortunately, he's a little under the weather, so he couldn't be here tonight. We have all kinds of flowers and gifts. New car. Carl, sorry you weren't here. First person out the room gets them.
I'm okay with that. All I want is the chair.
This too can be arranged.
All I want is the surplus. We will do that at next week's meeting. You can surplus vote the transfer of my 25 year old chair that no one else wants to sit in.
But Carl, in all seriousness, thank you for everything. Thank you for your stewardship. Thank you for your mentorship. Thank you for your steady hand on on the the matters and topics that have come be in front of you and the board and many other boards. And, you know, throughout the conversations we've had, I think, you know, there's a pretty standard answer to a lot of questions in the town of Southwick, which is ask Carl. And that's gonna leave a big hole here, mighty big shoes to fill because of the work you've done here. You have my thanks. I'm certain you have Diane and Jason's thanks. And if everyone in the room and everyone could just give Carl a big round of applause and.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate serving for 35 years under 20 different Select Board members. Certainly has been very educational in the town meeting members, the citizens. It was a great, it's a great place to raise a family. That's why we have a lot of disagreements sometimes because we don't know how we're gonna get there, but we all want to do something better. And I appreciate being part of that and getting to know a lot of people. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. So do you have any new business for us tonight?
I'm still cleaning out the office, so. And I do not need any more paper clips.
Oh, man, there goes my gift. All right. I'm gonna have to shuffle the deck here. Okay. Diane, do you have any new business for tonight?
I do. We're not going through the list first.
You want me to go through the list first?
No, we're done with one.
Yeah, why not?
Again, hold on one second. It's at the end of my new business. I did have a statement I wanted to make. There has been a round of communications by a member of this board that have been questioned as to whether they are from or reflect the opinion and desires of this board as a whole. These were represented as coming from a board position. I want to make it clear that I was not consulted nor included in any of those communications. I have now seen them and I do not support the actions that were demanded in those communications. And if either of you agree, I think town council should be consulted on the appropriateness of those discussions and whether some correction was maybe needed.
It's, I have no objection. It's certainly within your purview as a Select Board member to consult with town council, much like I did today on another matter unrelated to this. But that's certainly within your purview to do so if you so wish. Mr. Peron?
I have no problem with that, and if I, I will clearly state right now, if I have made those problems, I will accept that responsibility. I just want to address one thing, and that is I did review the emails that I sent to Mr. Stevenson. I did forget to, because I actually went back and edited my email prior to sending it. I did not edit the bottom. That was my mistake, but I will take full responsibility. And let me clearly say that this is my personal opinion, no one else's, and I stand by that opinion.
Thank you. Any other new business, Ms. Gale?
That was my new, new business.
Should I got everything here? Okay, I'd like to add one item under new business for further discussion, knowing that one member's a little under the weather and remote. I just kind of want to put this up for a future discussion. But I would like the board to consider to add buildings and grounds as a department under the Department of Public Works. Randy's probably looking very shocked right now because it's new to him as well. That would require a special act in front of town meeting, and it would obviously require some reconfiguration around DPW. But I think on a go-forward basis, that's one thing that we should consider because of the depth of resource that we have there now and that the Department of Public Works literally has Public right in their middle name. And that group could easily be set up to be successful in maintaining our buildings and grounds here. So again, not for discussion tonight. I just wanted to put it on the radar and, and maybe put it under goals and objectives to, to discuss and, and see if that's something worth exploring or not. Okay. Let's move through the new business. So first is to acknowledge that the governor has finally signed, not her fault, it took the legislature forever, special legislation to split the Treasurer Collector Clerk's Office under the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Chapter 46 of the Acts of 2024. What does all that mean? Southwick is, at this time, the only city or town in the Commonwealth that has a three-headed position there with a treasurer clerk collector is one role, which, once we hire a town clerk, we will, there will no longer be one of those in the Commonwealth. We have posted for the clerk. I believe that closes April 5th, right? And we'll see where we are with applications, and then we'll start looking at how we're gonna reconfigure the office and redo this and what the staffing's gonna look like as part of the budgeting process for fiscal year 25.
So as going down in history with the longest-serving CAO, we are also the last.
All right. Yes, older than dirt, Diane.
Ouch. That's right. He was not rowing for Washington crossing the Delaware. Okay. Review and send referral to planning board to hold a huge, public hearing for 233 South Loomis Street map amendment and zone change. So this is very similar to what we did a couple of minutes ago, except this, this is new business because there is an application from someone that would like to change the zoning at the Sodom Mountain Campground essentially, from its current zoning to residential 40, I believe. And therefore, we have the easiest job in the world, and we just vote to send it to the planning board to have a hearing. And they're asking for a warrant article for that, that zoning petition. So I need a motion to approve that referral to the planning board to hold a public hearing for 233 South Loomis Street map amendment and zone change.
I'll make that motion.
Seconded.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Dan Gale, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay, we have a change order from Young Developers LLC for the Town Hall Roof Replacement Project. Oh, and this one's going the right way, isn't it, Carl?
Yes, it is. Arthur Lawler's doing a great job as clerk of the works. And now I will tell you that this is change order number one. It catches up with everything. And there may be, obviously, I think I mentioned this the other day at the budget hearing. There'll probably be another change order that'll add a little bit back on because of the, the efficiency at which your roofing system sheds snow.
Correct.
Necessitate some more of those horizontal silver bars that have to be located in certain areas. So that is going to be coming back to you. Okay, so just be aware that the, the project is still going through the monetizing of the punch list.
So this, this change order is for negative $45,000.
Yeah, it's a reduction.
$9.40. So I need a motion to accept the change order.
I make a motion to accept this change order.
Seconded.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Dan Gale, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
And for everyone playing along at home, we have a new roof on Town Hall, and it sheds snow at an alarming rate when it wants to. So we need to put some snow protection at the edge of the roof above doors so that nothing horrible happens. So we'll be doing it. Okay. Always a fun game here. Approve and select fiscal year 24 paving and drainage projects. So these are projects that were approved, and Randy's still here. There he is. These are projects that were approved last year in a recommendation for new projects. So we're gonna have to probably schedule our annual tour of the roads soon, right, Randy?
Yeah, this is a, maybe a little bit of a bonus. So I, we have products that have wrapped up over the past couple of years. Many of them came in under budget, so there was some money that I left over. And in addition, we had a allocation through the state called the Fair Share Program. So between those two sources, there's a, a little bit of money that we can talk about for upcoming projects. In addition to this, I would hope that there may be some more money coming through the town through town meeting article as we have in the past couple of years, and also Chapter 90 money. So those two sources are not included in this list. So this is kind of like a little bit of a bonus. So my, my thoughts were, at least with this money, is to continue some, some drainage work on Feeding Hills Road that we started last year.
Okay. So that's three, that's the 324 grand you're talking about right here. And can be reallocated for new projects in 2024. And we, we don't know yet what the, well, the Chapter 90 will be fiscal year 25, right?
Correct.
Or there's additional, there's no additional Chapter 90 money from this year. Have we received any notice of winter roads yet?
No, that, I don't, I think that ship has sailed. So I think the fair share is kind of like this, this year's winter roads.
Of course it is.
So you're looking at 540,000, so you want to get down Randy's recommended list where he's got a couple of items that will fit within those dollar numbers. And then if you rank other items or you just carry forward this list over, once you go through your budget process and you assign other dollars, whether they're through free cash or an additional borrowing authorization, then you'll be able to program those authorizations to match the, the dollar estimated amounts on the projects Randy has. Yes, it'll be a short trip around town to get to the number.
It always is. Usually over by the first stop.
Yeah, it's about 15.
Even though we go through the motions, it's over at the first stop. Okay.
That's 15 minutes.
Do you want to carry this to next week so we can all do the Jenga math to try to figure out how to spend, spend that 540? And Randy, what do you think the, in your, your recommendation is just the Feeding Hills Road Drainage Project, Foster Road to Buckingham Drive. And then, once the fiscal year 25, 90 funds are available, the 2024 projects are complete, then we look at doing others. I just have one, I have one question on this, and I think we can mull on this for a week anyway, but do you know, is there any plan afoot in here to do anything with the, the general surface of 57 from, say, the town line?
That would be project four.
Not quite to town line, but.
Foster Road to Crepes.
Going the other way.
Gotcha.
Which would be the worst part.
It is the worst part.
I, I could pull some numbers together to do the remainder of Feeding Hills Road, Doug. I can have that for you available for, for next week.
Yeah. Can we have that, you think you do it for next week?
Sure, absolutely. Yeah.
Okay. Any objection to covering this next week and going over it?
Not at all. So you, Randy, you have 540 total available, but you were suggesting the 350 for Feeding Hills Road and then carrying the rest until the rest of the money is settled and then reallocate?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
So once, once our Chapter 90 is available, that's usually $370,000. And then if there's any money from town meeting.
Okay.
What about crack sealing? I mean, that's only 80. You could get a head start on getting that done even.
So we did allocate money for crack sealing last year, and they're gonna start that work in sometime in early April.
Okay, so item 16, you're not as concerned about that right now, then?
Not right now, no. I, I, I consider for future projects.
And I did see a hand, Mr., Sergeant Crocker.
Yes, excuse me. I don't know if this is the right time or the place, but regarding 57 from Buckingham to Crepes, what we are finding in the police department, because of the surface of the road is so bad, we are now finding people actually driving to the opposite side of the road to avoid it as they're coming around a corner down the hill. So it's starting to create void of hazard. It's fearful that we are in fact going to have an accident once, except this summer. I was hoping maybe this would be addressed, at least a skin coat or something. I know there's more to continue the project. But it is starting to become a, a major hazard.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so Jason, any objection to carrying this till next week and covering it and deciding what to do with this money for next week?
None.
Done. Okay. Review and approve changes to this town social media policy and telecommunications policy for appointed and elected board committee members. Diane, do you want to speak to this?
Sure. What you had all reviewed prior to this for the handbook was two policies that were basically employee oriented. So Nadine took a first stab and we went through it together after that to change that orientation to boards and committees to be more applicable. So it's basically the same content, different parties addressed.
So it just widens the scope of who it affects?
Yeah, it takes out employee and supervisor and things like that. Pretty much. Yes, Nadine, would you like to add in? And it combined it into one. It was two separate policies before. It is now melded into one policy. Yeah, for meaning law. Yeah, we inserted that in there and public records into the context.
Thanks. So would you then like to make the motion to approve the changes to the town's social media policy and telecommunications policy for appointed and elected board committee members?
I would make that motion wholeheartedly.
Jason, would you like to wholeheartedly second it?
I'll second it.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Dan Gale, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
And then I can finish that project.
Okay, and now I would entertain a motion to approve another one-year license agreement with the Commonwealth of Mass. and DCAM. And Inga's not here, a good thing, because I don't know what DCAM stands for. I think that's all the state-owned property people. State-owned parking lot at 99. Brove Road. We are working on a longer-term, something like that, but I don't want to miss.
Division of Capital Asset Maintenance Department. It's like the landholding department of the Commonwealth.
And we are in the middle of negotiating, correct, for a longer-term lease on this property, correct?
Yes, you are, sir. We're trying to get it, it previously had a 10-year lease. We did a one-year license agreement last year. We're doing another one-year license agreement this year as we continue those efforts to, to make it more of a long-term lease, because that'll, that'll lock in everything. And it also locks in the uses of that property next to the, the boat ramp for the overflow.
Okay, I need a motion for the chair to sign that amendment to the existing license.
I'll make a motion for you to sign the amendments.
I'll second.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Dan Gale, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay, set fiscal year 25 budget review meeting by select board CAO and accounting staff. I'm gonna suggest that we get together, I would say it would have to be either this week or next, but more than likely early next week, yes. And it can be an off night. It does not have to be a select board meeting. We'll post it as a select board meeting, but we have a pretty full agenda on the first. I do see the chair of the finance committee here. When are you guys meeting?
We're meeting tomorrow night, sir. Every Tuesday, the next two Tuesdays.
So when?
So you can't meet the same night as the finance committee because both boards use the accounting department staff to flush out their numbers.
And we shall not full rank. Because we'll lose. So you're meeting when, Tuesday? The next two Tuesdays? So we could meet either this Thursday, the 28th potentially? Or?
Usually the board does it after the finance committee meetings because they get down the column and they see where they agree and disagree. And that's always been a much faster exercise for you. And then you see where, where your differences are so that when you both get together under a joint meeting again, everybody's narrowed down the issues that they need to make decisions on.
But wouldn't that be then if we met next week, Thursday, they would have already met and had a draft, which we would then have the upper, we would be putting together our draft.
Yeah, yeah, not this Thursday, but yeah, a week from Thursday.
That would be the fourth.
Yeah, that would be better. But again, you also want to make sure off of that date first and then give an alternative date to make sure that the accounting staff is going to be available in here.
Okay.
And at that point.
If we can't meet on the fifth, that's a Friday, and we never meet on a Friday.
Third or the fourth are fine with, if you want to make the third the first date and the fourth the contingent date.
Preferably the other way around, for me.
Okay, that's, it's fine with me.
Jason?
One second, I'm looking at my calendar. Now, it's, which way was the way that was preferable for you, Mr. Ogilvy?
Fourth, then third.
Uh, that will, and we stated what time?
Six.
Um, six, that'll work. On the fourth, that would work for me. Wednesday will not work, the third.
Sounds like we have a plan.
What's your alternate date gonna be?
The third doesn't work for Jason.
So it'd be the next.
So you're going to the next week?
Yeah, it would be the ninth.
The ninth?
And this year, we're, we're fortunate because it's a leap year, everything's running a week later.
Uh, I cannot, well, I have an event on, a town event on the, on the ninth.
Okay.
So it would have to be, would have to be the 10th. Unless we could meet earlier on the ninth, but I think we'll, we'll ask the accounting folks nicely to try to do the.
10th does not work for me. The 10th will not.
All right, we're really banking on the fourth. Let's keep going. And if it's bad, we can always, we can always chat because scheduling is not, not a violation of open meeting laws.
What about the 11th?
No good for Mr. Mogul.
Okay.
May have one of those rare Saturday meetings again.
I can do that as well.
We'll get with them and we'll schedule, and we can converse to set that instead of spending all the time on it now. Motion to approve annual town meeting article and accept Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 54B for trust funds to use Mass. General Law, Chapter 203C, AKA the prudent investment rule. So for those of us that were
skipping in on the meeting.
Meeting last week, the part that I did get to pay attention to. This will be a warrant article for us to accept this provision of Mass. General Law to allow trust funds to use the prudent investment rule instead of the, it's slightly less abysmal investment funds than we invest. investment funds than we invest town trust funds in today. And there is a
That is correct.
KP law on here and I can share with you for anyone that would like to see it, a copy of the Bartholomew reports of the rates of interest on the primarily bond funds that we are invested in today with some of those trust accounts.
So if I read all that right, C is allowed for a little bit more risk in the funds? Is that correct?
Slightly.
Slightly, you said less.
Certainly, you're not buying credit default swaps or anything or Bitcoin, but but it does open up the portfolio a little bit to a little bit potential for higher returns.
Right.
So I need a motion to approve that article and then we can speak to it at town meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve that article for town meeting.
Second.
Doug Mogul, aye?
Dan Gail, aye.
Jason, pro and aye.
Okay. Onto old business. Now we'll work the list first. COA Director Internal Posting Done. When does that one close? That closes on the fifth as well. We have two closing on the fifth. Fantastic. So that's the update for that. Police Chief Internal Recruitment Process. You are indeed a week early. That will be next week, sir. April 1st, no joke. We'll have interviews for that's right. We weren't going to just bump it up to tonight.
Just because you weren't here.
We needed a little brevity right about then. High-Speed Internet Subcommittee, we are meeting this Thursday. We have the red line from discussions with Westfield Gas and Electric. Attorney Coyle has them and will promise to have them back to me in time for that meeting on Thursday. My intent is to have the Subcommittee review the red line to send back to this select board for review and/or approval and signature. Any updates on marijuana dispensary webpage posting process and template for RFI evaluation and scoring?
I still am waiting for feedback from council and I'm at a standstill.
He was on vacation. He's back now.
I will be sure to get in touch with him.
Can we look at? We really got to do this. We got to put a date on the calendar for this open forum. It's called a public meeting here. I call it more of an open forum slash listening session. Can we look at the week of April, what do you think? The week of the 15th is a holiday, right?
Yes.
But we can look at that week. Other than that.
I thought Chief.
Do you have any other interviews going on, Doug, with other positions that week?
Not, not yet.
Okay.
April 15th is a holiday?
Yeah.
Patriot's Day.
Only in math.
It's not.
Marathon Monday.
Because I have an Arizona account.
There you go. That's a bit further of a jog than Hockington to Boston.
Uh, we needed.
Did you say, did someone say that? Chief Landis will be around that week, do you know? Okay. 16?
That's the lead.
Works for me.
Can we see if at 6 o'clock we can have the auditorium? Lisa? Okay, nothing on the uh, American Legion tonight? Anything on mass general law, chapter 61, 61A, 61B?
You want to schedule that too?
You want to do that an hour after that one?
You're going to do that, you said after town meeting.
Oh, after town meeting. Yeah, we can do that.
Pick a date in May so it's locked up?
May is over by the time we get to that. Let's see.
Yeah, you have Memorial Day. Be careful.
Tuesdays work, May 14th? Not a
Election Day. That's Election Day.
Yeah, you can't do it on Election Day.
Oh, that's right.
See, everything's a week later because of the
And then the following week's town meeting week, that's the town Super Bowl. We will not do it that week.
Whatever after, yeah, 16.
How about the 30th? And that way we say we got it in tonight.
Can you push it any further?
No, because then it would be, well, yeah, I could, the 31st, but that's a Friday. I remember one time Carl will laugh at this. One board tried to schedule a meeting for a Friday and I actually saw a vein come out of Carl's head. We just don't call meetings on Fridays. It's not good policy, especially a Friday evening or a Friday afternoon.
No, but 7:30 in the morning.
Yeah, that's not going to happen either. So we'll, we'll try for that.
Well, I guess it's before the official start of summer travel, right?
Correct.
Give them notice now so they can plan for it.
Okay. I got to get my notes square for this one.
Doug Mogul, the county is okay with the fourth.
Thank you.
Thank you. I knew it would all come together. Did we not have the letter from Mr. Putnam in our file? I haven't. Okay, so the next item on, on, under old business, Town Administrator Recruitment Panel Preliminary Interviews, Completed Determined Interviews for Finalists, which is what Carl was kind of hinting at, wasn't it? Because I'm a little slow on the update. But first of all, I want to thank Jim Putnam and Celeste St. Jox's Chair and Vice Chair of that Subcommittee. I also want to thank this board for giving me the honor of serving on that Subcommittee. And also to John Coward, Mike Dowery, Greg Hamelin, Chief Landis for spending much effort and much time and much thought and much deliberation on this process. It was, it was the goal of the, we called it task, or the Town Administrator Search Committee to send forth three uh, potential candidates to the full select board to schedule a final interview in, in open session in front of this board. So I believe Mr. Putnam has transmitted a letter to all of you with those finalists for that position. And we are, I would like to have us take a look now at the calendar again to schedule an interview evening. And again, this does not have to be a select board meeting day or during the select board meeting. It could be another day. But there were three finalists. And the finalists are in alphabetical order. Randy Brown, currently the DPW Director for the Town of Southwick. And online on Zoom right now. Chris Garrity, Senior Accountant of the Southwick Hadley Electric Light Department. And Nicole Parker, the Town Administrator of Hardwick. That being said, late Friday, I was notified by the chair that Mr. Garrity has requested to be removed from consideration for the position. It was after the time that Mr. Putnam had set forth the recommendation to this board. So therefore, it, subject to the approval of, of the full select board, it, it's my, and, and also my individual opinion for discussion here that we proceed with scheduling final interviews with Mr. Brown and Ms. Parker based on what I'm aware of from the task committee and how we set forth the candidates to send to the full select board. I think the best course of action is to interview these two candidates rather than to go back and potentially repost, retake applications and repeat the cycle at this juncture. I think you have two very qualified individuals to at least have a, a full interview in front of the select board. But I, obviously I am but one member of this board and I was but one member of the, the search committee. But so interested to hear your opinion on that, if we should continue to schedule, go ahead and schedule interviews based on a slightly less than three applicants for the position.
I've read all of the materials we got three times through. And I liked all of them. I think there are two remaining really good ones and I would be satisfied with interviewing those two.
I agree with Ms. Gill.
So congratulations to the finalists. When would we like to schedule those interviews? And we probably should have two dates. And I would even entertain some might even consider a Saturday as an, you know, appropriate date, given that one of them has, one of them works right in town, the other one not so much, but
What's your, I'm pretty flexible, except Saturday, we have Saturday, the, what day is that? We have Beacon Hill and the Berkshires on the 6th.
Of April?
Yes.
I skipped all the way ahead. Let's see. Yes, we'll go. And we have a budget meeting now on the 4th.
Schedule a joint meeting at some point.
That too.
But you're meeting on the 9th, right? Second. So the joint meeting will probably be the 9th.
Yeah, you guys are on the 4th.
And the 11th, no good. I'm not going on the 13th. That's just bad. We have police chief interviews on April 1st and
And the police chief did say that he can do the 16th, the 16th, so we can put that on the calendar.
18th? It's too far from now. We got to get those in.
With the exception of the days that I gave you already, I can make just about anything work, including a Sunday. If we have to. It's too important.
April 2nd.
April 2nd?
Finance Committee has a meeting, so we definitely aren't going to be meeting with them.
That would work for me.
At what time? Would we?
6 o'clock.
You can have a backup date too, Doug. You had mentioned about having a backup date.
Would that be our, for our traveling one?
Is that question for me or? Doug had just mentioned about having
I don't have a good backup. I think it would be the 3rd. It would have to be the 3rd.
Is that good for you, Diane? Is that good for you and Jason?
Yeah.
I can make the 3rd look as a backup, yeah.
Thank you. And that one, we may schedule a tad earlier, maybe 5:30 if we could.
The one on the 3rd or both of those days on?
No, the 3rd. I think, I think.
The 3rd to 5:30.
We're going to do them both on one day?
I think we'd knock them out on, in one day on the 2nd. We're going to have two interviews on the first, two interviews on the 2nd.
Yeah, and you're going to have to provide your questions for Labor Council to review on that matter to Nadine and Bob.
Um, part of MRI's thing was they were going to help us with those questions. Is that correct?
Feel free to reach out to them direct and I would submit, I would say, three questions apiece. And can you have those to us by Wednesday?
That's good.
So that gives her time to to put to form. And, and I will gladly give up a question or two to either of you since I had the privilege of sitting on the the task. So I got it. I had a bunch of interviews. My questions were already in the preliminary screening committee.
Can we get just those questions so we don't waste our time duplicating those?
We'll check with them, but I don't see why not because they're just the questions. Sure. Further discussion on that or we've Okay, T-Mobile Hometown Grants Application?
I have been working, I actually started working on that grant application today.
Okay, Town Clerk Internal Posting is done. That also closes April 5th. Okay, Master Plan Implementation Subcommittee. Mr. Dowery and I had a bit of a summit last Thursday.
Hi, Michael.
I don't know if he's here tonight, but oh, he is there. There he is.
How are you, sir?
Good. How are you?
So we have a, I have to flesh out the proposal in more detail. And he has a concept to discuss as well. One of the concepts discussed was being done in another town and I, I have, we have to check with council to see how it would work was, I mean, obviously there's a little bit of a difference of opinion between the, the, the two boards as to which should be the appointing authority of a master plan implementation committee. And we bandied back a couple of different ideas. But one of the things, which town was that, Mike?
Uh, it's Milton.
Milton, actually I went in front of their town meeting to give the town the authorization to actually have its own master plan implementation committee. It's, it's an appointed committee, but it's not on, your appointing authority is not like your ruler such as it is. It was kind of an interesting, interesting take. But we had, and Mike, what else had we chatted about as far as what that committee would look like preliminarily?
Um, I, we talked, I mean, it's still always been the five members, one select board, one planning board. And then three residents. That hasn't changed. I think we talked about as a compromise to uh, of the three resident members have one appointed by the select board, one appointed by the planning board and one appointed by a joint appointment. And I think we were going to look into what you just talked about as to whether the board can sort of exist independently through a town meeting vote or whether it needs to be under some committee. But, you know, for now, you know, I think we, it's set up under the select board for now. I'd much rather just keep it going. You know, with that. Uh, get it going, I should say, with the sort of structure that we have in place and then sort of deal with it being independent of, you know, a year down the line or, or, you know, next town meeting if that's what we need to do.
So that's one, that is a proposal in front of us. I'd like to, we'll send that out in the form of an email for everybody here, but then we can come back and discuss it next week and maybe finalize our plan or present a response back to the planning board by, you know, obviously a productive discussion with, with Mr. Dowery and as the chair of the planning board and myself and to come back to the board with some kind of reasonable compromise to where we go for.
Did you have discussion on what the charge and duties and responsibilities and authority would be?
That's, and that's part of, that was part of the Milton, not bylaw, but town meeting article, kind of spelled it out a little bit. We didn't go into a lot of detail about that. Because that, and that, it's part of the discussion really, and we should, we can flush that out a little more in that under, you know, the, the boards and committees that have either elected or appointed and are subject to mass general law or operate under a certain set of guidelines, you know, planning board with, with chapter 185, but they also administer chapter 315 and conservation with the Wetland Control Act, et cetera, you know. You can't give away that authority under, under a Subcommittee or a, even a committee. You just can't usurp their authority or, or take away their, their ability. But I think that the purpose of the Master Plan Implementation Committee will be to look at how, basically to either compliment, assist or shame boards or committees that don't, aren't working towards the goals that set forth in the master plan. And I use shame lightly, but you know, if, if a board is just off the reservation as far as what they're doing and being completely inconsistent with, you know, a master plan that had been, you know, hopefully will be adopted by the Planning Board. And after, you know, two solid years of public input and debate and discussion and formulation and, and looking at, well then, you know, that, that, then people need to look at either the appointing authority of the members on the Board of Commission, Wayward Board or Commission, or the voters need to look at the people that are voted or elected to those positions and put people in place that are gonna do as they wish, so, you know, subject to the master plan and, and Mass General Law. That, that's just my opinion on it. Cause you, you can't give away authority and say you guys are the master plan police.
Right.
Right?
Right.
But
And, and part of why I ask that is I don't want people who might want to serve on that to think that they are going to.
So you asked a leading question, did you?
I can do that.
Yes, you did. You did an excellent job.
It needs to be clear to all parties.
Excellent. So that, that's just, and again, my opinion on that. Okay, so we'll carry that under old business for next week to come back and pick up. Let's go around the room. Carly, any old business for your, for your last business?
Uh, no, I just want to, I just want to thank everybody. You know, the board members and my office staff, Lisa and Nadine and Christie and all the department heads. I want to take this advantage, this opportunity to do that. So that to me is the important thing for, that I want to convey this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Steinhardt. Uh, Mr. Peron, old business?
Not at this time.
Hope you're feeling better soon. Ms. Gil?
Nothing else.
Okay, I just have a couple things. First, I did partake and I think you were at it as well. There was a document management seminar from Mass Municipal Association. It talks about document management and electronic handling of documents. It is a community compact opportunity, something to consider for the short-term future for how we handle a lot of the paper and stuff that we have in town. Thank you both for listening to my radio show on March 20th. You know who you are. That's available on YouTube for the other three people that watch it. Articles two and three from last year's town meeting were finally approved by the Attorney General. Those were both related to cannabis. There are some minor corrections to be put in front of a future town meeting. And I'm sure Town Council is, got that right behind the other stuff that they're working on for you right now. I did want to update you on the Eagle Scout project that was originally proposed to be done at the the Town Green. That looks like it will not take place on the Town Green, so I've encouraged the young man to rethink his project and come back to us with a, either a modification or new location to same. One of the things I don't know, I meant to check and I did not, but I left a note for myself is do we have on our goals and objectives, a new successor agreement with Suffield for the LPP? Cause that's going to end this year.
Uh, Lisa, Lisa has it. She could pull it out and give it to you.
Okay. And I know Mr. Peron had, had indicated a, an interest in being that guy to go over and talk to Colin in their Concom to see if they would like to enter into a successor agreement and coordinate with our LMC and Conservation. Are you still interested in doing that, Mr. Peron?
Yep, that's correct. I've reached out to Mr. Grendles and we're gonna try and set up a date to meet with them and work this out.
Okay. And lastly, I was informed, this is kinda under old business. We did discuss it at, I think our last meeting was the Community Development Block Grant and we received an email from Pioneer Valley Planning that that application was submitted earlier today. Therefore, everyone's up to date. Is there any other business in front of the board before we move to go into executive session? Hearing none, I will just note for the record that we are going to reconvene in open session. That's very unlike us. We usually do not reconvene, but we will be reconvening because some, there may be the need for a vote after our discussion in the executive session tonight. So I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Sections 2 and 3 and Chapter 214, Section 1B, Labor Council, Litigation Matters and Strategy for Collective Bargaining with Police Union Coalition, Fire, IAFF, DPW, Non-Union Staff and Clerk Union, UPS EU. And we're gonna move to go into executive session to conduct collective bargaining sessions with non-union personnel and to reconvene in open session. And to move to go into executive session to conduct negotiations with non-union personnel and to reconvene in open session. And I'm declaring that an open meeting will have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the body and that we will reconvene in open session. And that we're going to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and the Chair moved to go into executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and to reconvene in open session. And we're gonna move to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. The Chair declared that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the body and to reconvene in open session. And lastly, per Chapter 214, Section 1B, a person shall have a right against unreasonable substantial or serious interference with their privacy. The Superior Court shall have jurisdiction and equity to enforce such right and in connection therewith to award damages. Now, I need a motion to do that.
Make a motion to go into executive session?
Seconded.
Okay, roll call vote. Doug Mogul, aye.
Dan Galle, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
Okay, now we're just a little bit different procedure here. We're gonna pause the recording. Okay, time is 10:07. This is the Select Board meeting for March 25th, continuing after executive session. And at this time, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
And I'll second.
Roll call vote. Doug Mogul, aye.
Dan Galle, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
All right. Have a great night, everyone. Thank you.
See ya.